I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you please rise and we'll say the pledge together?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Gola-Dai?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the regular minutes from February 22nd?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any corrections? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gola-Dai?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. And comments of board members. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and I'm going to let some others go first if Miss Gola-Dai would like to begin this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, those who are seeing us virtually as well. I'd like to say a big thank you to the entire parent community for their cooperation in letting the children do remote learning while we're having the staff be vaccinated. And of course, to the health department, the Natsbury Hospital, the teachers, the staff, superintendent Cedar for making this possible. We're really thrilled also that the Field House is being utilized so much for the community. And that is your building and you helped build it, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Getzmann?
I would just like to welcome everybody. I think spring is finally here. Get through today and Thursday. It's kind of shocking when you hear some numbers. The latest number that was kind of a setback to me was 673 days since our ball teams have been on the field. And our spring activities have started. So I know 670 days later, our kids are ready to get started in some activities outside. So it's exciting that we have a district that started up in the fall and believed in the kids. And with the help of everyone on board, we have had a very successful year. And so I'm excited for that. I would also be remiss to say that we have, we'll be recognizing some talent tonight as well. And then to Colton Spurgeon for his placement at the state level, so in wrestling, seventh place. So that's exciting when we have those kinds of things to share.
Great, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I'll lead off by saying I regret having not been here last time to celebrate in the exemplary leadership award that you so greatly deserve. And then likewise, I'd like to compliment the school system, all the employees who have worked so diligently since this crazy pandemic started and the flexibility that you've shown. I have the opportunity to work with people from different school districts and compare how they're handling things. And this COVID, how you've handled the COVID vaccination, as you mentioned, was done very, very well. The timing of it was set up just appropriately to get that weekend in to recover from that shot. Other schools, I think, are wishing that that's what they had done as well. So it was good planning, well done. And again, thanks to everyone for being flexible and diligent.
Thank you. Mr. Workman?
Thank you. I'd like to also welcome everybody this evening. I don't know that there's a lot to say after that, but I would also like to echo the coordination between the school system and the health department and the hospital at the Field House. That was a well-run event, very efficient, very well time-wise. So it was good to see again that the Field House is being utilized for something like that as well. So again, welcome.
Thank you. And thank you all again for coming this evening. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Commendations and communications.
Thank you. I too would like to welcome everyone here today. And before we jump right into the commendations and communications, just a shout out to the Thompson family. Mr. Thompson, our board member, is another grandpa. I think that makes 14 now, so congratulations to you. Populate the earth. So congratulations. And I would like to share some commendations and communications tonight. As you look at your board agenda, I'm going to share it in somewhat of an update here. If I can sneak up here and take a look at it. And I'm going to do it via PowerPoint presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and get this started. So I'm going to take over for just a quick second here. And we had our Mount Vernon High School art program participate in this virtual event for the Ohio School Boards Association Spring Concert. And we had some wonderful representation. And I've kind of put a number of these up here. The first is art by Alec Ashcraft. It's called Rainbow Complexion. These were all done by colored pencil drawings. The second one was done by Anna Hellman called Vienna. So lots of detail there, very well done by Anna. The third one that was enrolled was by Aubrey Meeker. A lot of detail there with her flamingo mantis. And then finally, we have Aralyn Thomas. And I hope I don't mess this up, but it's called Alade Mariposa. Sounds good anyway, but some wonderful artwork. I know our high school art teachers are extremely proud of these young people for all their work. And it's always nice to have students be recognized for this. So congratulations to them.
I didn't see that on the agenda.
You know, there's always a bit of a risk, especially in the night that perhaps you're being evaluated by the board to go against your board president, who quite frankly said, Bill, don't make a big deal about this. And I said, well, maybe a little deal. And certainly, Dr. Bennett is a very humble person. But at the same time, I feel like she deserves that recognition to be one of 12, about 3,400 board members. That's quite an accomplishment. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I've also put down here for the board, if you wanted individual pieces, you can link into those as well. Also, I guess I would also just want to echo in this commendation section what Mrs. Getzmann echoed about Mr. Spurgeon. I'll tell you what, I've seen that young man wrestle all year. He's wrestled with class. I mean, I've seen him go up to opponents after a tough loss. And that was somebody I pointed to and said something to coach. He knows how to win. He didn't lose very often, but when he did, he was gracious in that. So to take seventh in the state for Division One Wrestling is quite a feat and quite an accomplishment.
He deserves a hand to.
Reports of public participation.
And I believe Heather is here this evening?
So my name is Heather Missler, and I am the senior class secretary. I have been, this is my third year now, so excited to be here. So currently, we're in the last part of the third nine weeks. So that means students are working hard to just get through until spring break, which we're all really excited for. And of course, the fourth quarter will go by very fast. There is a virtual day this Friday due to teachers getting their second round of vaccinations. And there was a virtual day last week when the junior class took the ACT. One big thing that's coming up is the forum show. There will be a forum show this year with all the COVID guidelines in place. Court has been announced, and we are currently working on the dance for that. I actually had a court dance practice today. So the report is coming along very nicely. Tryouts are complete. And there are around a dozen acts. I think a little more, a few more than a dozen. There'll be limited tickets available just because of the COVID guidelines, but it will also be livestreamed. And there are four shows this year. One on Friday, April 9th at 7:00 PM. Two on Saturday, April 10th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. And then one on Sunday, April 11th at 2:00 PM. Currently, the clubs at the high schools, National Honor Society has a meeting Thursday morning. And we are holding elections for new officers this week. K Club had, their most recent meeting was today at their school. They are gearing up for elections next week as well. They are continuing with their Yellow Crew Up Service Project and their Kansas Senior Goodbye Service Project. And then Alex Bier recently got elected as lieutenant governor of our K Club district, so good for him. And they are also gearing up for DLC or the District Leadership Conference, which is virtually April 10th. MBTV released an episode today that was talked about, that talked about advice for freshmen, the FFA program and this week's lunch venue. And Diversity Club has been meeting and inviting students to participate. So sport band orchestra, just like we said, Colton Spurgeon placed seventh in the state. And recently, I think Saturday, March 6th, we had seven students go to state for indoor track. So that was another good thing that happened. Band orchestra have begun to prepare for their spring concert. The first week of March, Band Orchestra also, and choir also had their late winter concerts. So those were very nice. Baseball has begun practices and tournaments this Thursday, Thursday, and Saturday. And all other spring sports have begun full practices. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mrs. Ness, but I don't see this evening. Mr. Lang, did you want to say anything? Okay, thank you. And public participation, we have Mr. Darren Prince. I saw you come in, but I didn't know where you'd gone.
Good evening, board members, fellow administrators. I signed in as public at the behalf of Mr. Hankins to try to keep this a secret. But I also find it fitting, as I'm officially in official capacity with the National Guard this evening, in order to present an award to Mr. Cedar. Whenever Mr. Cedar hired a National Guard member, I'm not exactly sure if he'd do exactly what he was getting into. Hey, I've heard it's a couple weeks a year and then on the weekend once a month. What I can say is he's learned, as much as my family has learned, is that that's not always the case. And over the past year, it's been absolutely historic for the National Guard. And in Ohio, I've had the opportunity to be deployed as an operations officer in support of COVID-19 as well as the civil unrest and then our regular duties that we have. Whenever I'm gone, it's tough on the family, but it's also extremely tough on your employer and in my role on the school. What I can say of Mr. Cedar is from the time that he's hiring me, I have felt unparalleled support from him and the service to my country and my community. And I can say that it's not always the same for all National Guard members that they feel that support because it puts a strain on those around you. But I can say that my fellow administrators have picked up where my slack was so that I could serve my community. And I've really felt the trust from Mr. Cedar that whenever I'm gone, I'm still going to keep keep functioning in my role as principal. And in the moments that I can't, when I'm disconnected, he ensures that the school is taken care of. And again, thank you to fellow administrators who step up and fill in that role. So without further ado, I'm going to read what it says on here because it's far more official than my words. But the Office of the Secretary of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, recognizes Mr. William Cedar from Mount Vernon City Schools as a patriotic employer for the contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force. Sir, I can't thank you enough for what you've done thus far and what you've achieved.
I'll tell you what, I feel a little unworthy of such an honor. I mean, this is a school, this is a district honor. If I asked every board member here, you would feel the same way. And patriotism runs strong. You all ought to be the ones we're honoring, quite frankly. And I know, quite frankly, your assistant principals do an amazing job, both Christie Grandstaff and Rob Gross, as well as your entire staff. When you're not there, we don't find ourselves having to step in a whole lot to assist. So our thanks to you and the guard and all those who serve, because you're really the heroes in this. So on behalf of the school board, I certainly accept this award.
Awesome. Thank you.
We are very blessed to have such a wonderful community, school administration. We're just, I'm very proud to be a part of this district. Okay, there are no items for information at this time for board?
Anybody else speaking tonight?
No, there are no other public participations. And additions, additions?
I do have a couple of additions to the agenda tonight. The first is remediation agreement that was added to Section 6, or Action 11, I'm sorry, of Student Services. And I have the addition of, well, the commendations that was added to Section 3 that we've already covered this evening. So those two items for your addition. Under the superintendent's report, under items for information, we've kind of made it a monthly update as to what things are going on in the district. And I will generally do that through kind of a Google slide. And so I have a Google slide here that I can share with you. It is also linked to your agenda. Again, this will be our March update. I'll go to present here. All right. So a number of items just to share with you tonight. COVID-19 related items, fifth grade outdoor education, which is something we shared most recently. Our fourth nine weeks begins here in about a week and a half. And how we're looking at our MVDA. And then we recently did a thought exchange that I would, thought I would share just some brief information about. The first is COVID information. I updated the COVID dashboard this afternoon. It changes just so ever slightly. We've been so thankful that it's been really low. We are, at this point, we have two students and two staff who are COVID positive in the district. Our elementaries are right now, both staff and students are at zero. Our middle school and high school, I believe, have one student and one staff each. The other item I wanted to share is that COVID vaccinations, that was mentioned earlier. Our second dose for city school personnel is this coming Friday, March 19th. We did put that in our parent update this past weekend. Again, we're going to go remote learning on that day. Remote learning means our students will be completing online assignments or work will be sent home with them on Thursday prior to March to complete. We're thankful for the support of our community to be able to do that. Our teachers will be online and working during that day. We'll start vaccinations at about 12:30 and it takes us well past 3 o'clock. It is a well-oiled machine. Certainly, it was the first time, and I would expect nothing less this time. But when you're vaccinating 320 employees, it takes some time. And that's really important. Just as another COVID informational reminder, just because we get our second vaccination, that doesn't mean that we're dropping safety protocols because we're not. We're going to follow the guidance very carefully that's been presented to us. We'll continue with social distancing and masking and the other things that are brought to our table. So we're thankful for this. We don't take it for granted. I'm thankful that they're bringing the age limits down. And it seems like we're heading in the right direction, but we can't let our guards down. So that's COVID information. This was kind of a nice little extra we were able to provide in the update. And the elementary principals have really been doing a nice job of kind of working on this and wanting to do this for kids. Obviously, last year, when COVID came in the spring, so many things were canceled. And as we find opportunities to bring some things back, we're just so thankful to be able to do that. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to provide an overnight camp experience this year. But we are looking at multiple day camps where we'll go first thing in the morning, probably stay through maybe dinner hour, bring our kids back after dinner. And we're looking to have two different kinds of experiences for our fifth graders during that opportunity. It is a great opportunity for our students to get to know each other from the other elementary schools before they join the middle school. And it really gets them a chance to get out in nature and to understand what learning can take place in those kind of environments. So that's exciting. More information will be coming about that. I believe our first day is going to be sometime in May, May 10th or 11th. And we'll continue to keep folks updated relative to that. The other thing I wanted to just share is our MVDA students' intent forms for the fourth nine weeks. Again, not this Friday, but the following Friday is the end of our third nine weeks. So we'll be heading into the fourth nine weeks. We are providing students an opportunity who are currently in our digital academy, grades K through 12, the ability to come back to in-person learning, a traditional setting for the fourth nine weeks. We're not moving folks from traditional setting back into the digital setting at this time. We're just allowing that one-way movement. So if you're a current MVDA student and you wish to enroll in traditional in-person, you'll need to fill out an intent form. That intent form link was on the parent update, but it is also a link on the district website. As of leaving to come to the meeting today, and today was initially kind of the day we kicked it off. We have 13 students who have already decided that they would be coming back to in-person learning. So that's just out there, that we'll leave that window open through next Monday. And we'll continue to send out some Knox Alert reminders relative to that. Okay? Thought exchange. We did throw out a thought exchange over the weekend. And the governor has really tasked a lot of school districts, most school districts in the state of Ohio, to think about extended learning opportunities. Well, to a number of your points, I think Mrs. Getzmann in particular in her opening, I'm really thankful that we've been able to actually be in school all year long. You know, we started off the year in a hybrid situation just to kind of get our feet wet, to get all of our kids in, at least for part of the time. And then since October, we've been all in that entire time. And I know there are a lot of districts who haven't been in yet, quite frankly. And we're pretty thankful that we've been able to do that. And I don't feel like we've had a huge amount of learning loss. Now, we certainly had some, you know, in the spring of last year, we had about three months there that were really challenging. So we put out a thought exchange question. What extended learning opportunities could we make available to students at all grade levels that would not only benefit their learning, but also support their physical and our social emotional well-being? We've had that thought exchange out there over the weekend. As of, well, before coming to this meeting, we had 81 participants, 49 different thoughts already with over 710 stars. In other words, people are going in to rate those thoughts. Whoops. And here are some of the top thoughts, just to share those with you. I'll give you some, you know, much more detailed information as time goes on. But what we're getting are things like summer camps where we can learn and have fun at the same time, incentivized reading programs, after-school tutoring, some STEM programming, really an interest to do hands-on kind of learning, free summer school at the high school level for students who might have fallen behind or are credit deficient, jumpstart programs. In other words, having something maybe right around August to kind of get some of our kids a jumpstart into the new school year. And again, there are 49 different thoughts. Some of them certainly parallel each other, but I would encourage everybody to go on and take a look at that. You may not have more thoughts to share, but you can certainly look at the thoughts that are out there and rate them. Because ultimately, what happens is, as you really like a thought, you rate it high, it bubbles its way up to the top. And then it makes our top five or 10. And that really allows the administration the opportunity to go, okay, this is what's valuable to the community. Let's see if we can't pull off these kinds of extended learning opportunities. Over here to the right, I just did a little word cloud. And you know, the word camps came up a lot. Summer, reading, arts, activities. So you're really seeing an engagement that they're willing to have more. I think of the, of those who have participated, the 89 participants, I think there's only 11 of those who said, because I asked a question, would you be willing to participate if we offered summer programming? Yes, no, or maybe? Yes and maybe was right about 75 of those. 11, I think, said, no, I don't think so. But we had a whole lot of yes and maybe. So depending on the programming that we're able to put in, I think there's going to be some interest in extending the opportunity. Again, another reminder, school breakfast and lunch programs, it continues to be free. And so I know that many of our youngsters are taking advantage of it. We try to put that out there all the time. It helps the school when our students partake in our school lunch programs and breakfast programs. So again, just putting in another plug for that as well. So that is the parent update. Or the board update, I guess. Any questions? Hearing none. In this section, we only have two items for board approval. Number one is a board policy update with the use of credit cards. And number two is the high school and middle school fees. For your approval? And number two is the high school and middle school fees for your approval.
Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve those two items as read.
Full move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann. Were there any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getz.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Under curriculum, the success report for this evening, you mentioned about our free lunch program. One of the items, the very first one is Gehanna Jefferson is bragging about their free meal program, which we already have, so I won't go into that. The second item is about Zanesville City High School program sites. And this is called the Life Plan Program. And it offers career insight to students through, they talk about potential career pathways. And high school principal Grandstaff says, it's not so much finding out what you want to do, but it's eliminating what you don't want to do. And once you do that, then you find out what's sitting out there in front of you and that's what you want to do. So that was his perspective. And he said, students are exposed to occupations ranging from manufacturing and welding to law offices and retail. They can test the waters with job shadowing, field trips, and one-on-one meetings with business leaders to help them discover what they may want to do someday. High schools are also implementing more hands-on, real-world programs. And the goal is to help students directly translate what they're doing in the classroom to what they can someday do for a living. And during the pandemic, of course, they haven't been able to do as many face-to-face experiences. So they're offering virtual options through videos. And local companies are also getting involved to get children excited about hitting the books. Halliburton in Zanesville participated in the challenge program. And the students have to meet certain academic marks and the winners are selected in five areas. And those are attendance, STEM, community service, academic improvement, and academic excellence. And they can, they're vying for a $500 scholarship, which I thought was pretty neat. The district is also implementing a solar, excuse me, energy array that will power some of the schools. And there will be a curriculum surrounding it. Students can learn hands-on how their clean energy system works. So that was a pretty extensive success item for that school district. And then the last one I was just going to mention is the fourth item. What's the future of SATs? And the article points out, in December of 2020, 124,000 students were unable to take the SAT due to the pandemic facility closures. And they're hypothesizing that the majority of colleges will drop the requirement. Well, they've dropped the requirement for this year. And the prediction is that a large number of the institutions will not return to the test requirement. So I thought that might be of interest to some of our students in high school that are coming up, making college decisions and thinking about those tests. And then she mentioned this evening about the ACT just being given. So, so the SAT wasn't, but the ACT has been. So, and are there any questions about any of those?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we're on to fiscal services.
Mr. Cedar, if you'd open the financial report. Don't mind, you go on to page three. You'll see in page three, especially at the top of it, in terms of general property tax, we got three advances for the first half property taxes. We actually received our final for the first half, but it did not come in the month of February. So you're looking at February numbers here. Everything else, except for that, is pretty boilerplate. We did receive a little bit more in foundation funding as they started giving back some of the money that had initially been taken as a result of COVID for this school year. Obviously, some was taken last school year, but they, they took an amount and they said, realized they didn't need it. So they've started to give that back. So we saw a little bump there as well. But in terms of the rest of the report, it's pretty standard unless the board has any questions. Not much going on in terms of investments. I did want to let the board know that I was able to start investing some of our insurance pool. It is not going to show up on this report because we just did that. I had a conversation with the health and insurance committee about investing those funds as opposed to just leaving them there in our, in our traditional bank. And as we all know, the interest rates at this point in life aren't great. So we've, we've put out some of that money in hopes of making a little more, which is obviously going to keep the cost down for the district and for the employee. So we viewed it as a win-win. There is a resolution on the agenda. This comes from the auditor. I will fill in your names and all that good stuff. But the part that really matters to you is if you'll continue to scroll, Mr. Cedar, you're accepting these rates. So that's the, the board is asked to do that each year. So you'll have to vote on that. And then a slight change in appropriations, we were able to shift some dollars. And as you look at this, you'll see each time we've done this, we appropriate a certain amount. And when we go over, we have to make a change. We were able to shift some funds and it wasn't a lot of funds. You can see the $6,300 and take them out of general fund expenses and shift them somewhere else. So every time we can do that, we're happy to do so because we're protecting the general fund. So that's why you see this appropriations report on here as well. There's no questions, I'll move on to donations.
I just wondered if you should mention, you talked about the, investing the health insurance fund. And I don't know if everyone knows that we're self-insured. You might.
That's a great point. Thank you, Dr. Bennett. We are a self-insured school district. We do have medical mutual that sort of works in an administrative role, but all the expenses, the employees and the board pour money into a fund. And that fund is used to pay the expenses. So what we're trying to do is attempt to make some additional funds. So like I said earlier, it will cost the board less money and the employee less money. And instead of just leaving it set there, like I said earlier, we can hopefully make a little bit of money. We did a comparison and there was a recent month where we made $84, where if we had had it invested in this way, we would have made $840. Again, it's not a ton of money in a district our size, but every little bit helps. So that's the plan, is to invest some of it. There's still a lot of restrictions. We can't invest it all. We're very locked down in terms of public school investing. But we wanted to invest what we could so we could make some additional money.
And the investment will still stay with the insurance fund?
Correct. Any interest made goes right back into that fund, which again, hopefully will reduce costs in the future.
And I'd say I appreciate Gary's foresight into this, just the ability to be able to do it and to, to make some, generate some income for the district. But there's never enough out there that we can't pull it back. We need to pull it back for insurance purposes. So just a wise move, I think, to, to put ourselves in a better position. So thank you.
Question, question on that? So absolutely, that's a great move. So Gallagher doesn't participate in that part of it, right? You, you direct that through another source?
Yeah, we work with a company called Meter. So you'll, you.
Yeah, that.
Only see there, so they're going to create a completely separate account. So there's no possibility of them getting confused. What, what I reassured the committee of, the health insurance committee is, we're not looking to take your interest and move it to the general fund. It's going to stay right where it is because it benefits both of us, meaning the board and the employee.
Any other questions? Good report, thank you. And.
All right, we do have a few donations. We have two donations from Marshals, one going to Columbia, the other one to Dan Emmett. And they donated mask and sanitizer. We have a donation from Staples in the form of supplies to, also to Dan Emmett Elementary School. Then we have some memorial books. We have a book called Tea Time with Daddy. And it's in memory of a Mr. McLean, who was the father of Heather Sanders, intervention specialist with the district. And a book titled Depression, A Teen's Guide to Survive and Thrive, in memory of Eleanor Mathias, who is the mother of Lynette Pellet, the assistant to the treasurer.
I would entertain a motion to approve those fiscal services items as read. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do I have a second question? Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Were there any questions? You may call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. And we'll now have our legislative liaison report.
Thank you. The second link is where I take most of the information from. And there's a lot, I'll talk as quick as I can. HB 200 was announced at a press conference and the bill would reverse the state report cards and school accountability systems. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 contains money for K-12 education. This will be in the form of grants in which 90% must support coronavirus response. And the funds will be distributed using the Every Student Succeeds Act Title I-A formula. SB 22 is the establishment of the Ohio Health Oversight and Advisory Committee that went to the governor's desk. SB 19 was passed in the Senate. It requires the Ohio Department of Education to reduce regulatory restrictions by 30% by the year 2025. HB 67 is regarding the testing against student flexibility. And OSBA and other agencies provided proponent testimony. And the House weighs a mean, the committee heard opponent testimony on HB 126 from OSBA and others. The bill would require the boards to pass a resolution approving a property valuation complaint and other requirements. In the testimony for HB 126, it would prove a justice compadically participating system. That the state has determined its best policy to fund our public school. HB 133 and SB 62 are bills relating to property tax evaluation. HB 2 establishes the residential broadband expansion. And this is co-sponsored by Representative Stewart from Asheville and our own representative Rick Carfagna. SB 66 establishes career pathways, apprenticeship program, which is a process for cities and other school districts to support that. There are other very, a lot of other bills. And finally, the State Board of Education passed a resolution to encourage legislative changes in graduation class of 2021. Any questions? Comments, ideas? They're still looking, of course, at the funding issues.
It looks good, though, what they're, what they're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have some.
No items for this section. Under student services, section 11, we have no items for information at this time. We do have one item for board approval and I'll turn that over to Mrs. Rose.
I have one item for action tonight, and that's the mediation agreement that is in your agenda. You will note that much of the document has been drafted and it looks to that. And also needs confidence in the final confirmation. So I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion then to approve this item as read for student services. Thank you, Mr. Workman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. And I think Mrs. Rose is here if you have questions. I think you've all had a chance to read it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And you may call the roll, please.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. And personnel.
Under personnel and certificated licensed staff, no items for information tonight. I do have a number of items for board approval. For the 2021 school year, we have a couple substitute teachers and some summer school teachers as we're beginning to think about those kinds of activities. Also, a number of spring supplementals. We wanted to kind of wait and make sure that those were going to move forward as we hoped. So you've got some extracurricular things there relative to that. Under retirement, I got a surprise retirement here just recently. Marty Bell is going to be retiring as director of choral music effective the end of the school year. Obviously, I hope we get a chance to bring Marty back and, and share with her our appreciation for what she's done for our music program. And we'll probably move forward here in the next day or so, really putting that out there to try to attract the best we can. We do have a couple of resignations. The first, I'd like to just make a quick note of Doug Savage has resigned as head girls basketball coach. When I came here eight years ago, we had hired a coach. I think everybody was really excited and for one reason or another, decided last minute to move in a different direction. I think it was actually back to college. And we were really in a tough spot. And I remember that was the first time I met Coach Savage. Doug is a coach's coach. He's coached here in Mount Vernon for a long time. He brings with it a lot of integrity and hard work and ethics that I greatly appreciate. He stepped in in that difficult time and believe it or not, he's, you know, he coached for the last eight years. And so we certainly appreciate his dedication to the district and to the girls he served. And then, of course, all the boys and the other programs over the years. And then finally, in this section, we have the resignation of Andrew Walsh, middle school PE teacher.
I would entertain a motion to approve those items as read.
Full move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. And we have some classified staff items.
Under classified staff, we do have an item, a couple items for information for you tonight. Due to a little bit of a secretarial shift at the high school level, we had a full-time 12-month employee want to go to nine and a half months. We had a nine and a half month employee who would like to go to 12 months. And yet, in the whole interim, we still had to open both positions up and provide an opportunity for everybody to interview. And so when you see those transfers, those things on there, that's kind of a large part of that. And we also have a request for medical leave of absence. Under recommended items for board approval tonight, we have just a couple. We do have a transfer of a second shift custodian. And we also have a summer school aide in Jack Global Master.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve those two items as read.
Full move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. And at this time, if anyone would like to add anything, I'm open to that. Otherwise, then we need to go into executive session for two purposes, the purchase of property or for public purposes or sale, et cetera. And the appointment, the employment is the second, or the first, they're in the reverse order, I guess. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for those two purposes.
Full move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Ms. Regola-Dye.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Workman.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried. And thank you all for attending this evening. Are we going to be?
Thank you.